With that, I will call the West Richland City Council meeting to order. May fifth. Virtual meeting and.
April fifth, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me. April fifth, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get ahead to that April with the May flowers instead of the April showers. The, before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to read the virtual ground rules and then call the meeting to order for our April fifth council meeting.
All right, thank you. Please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you have joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant ID. Please call in with that ID as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period. And when the mayor asks for public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart. And Ken Stoker. It's still muted. There. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll move on to the pledge of allegiance this evening and I'm going to ask council member smart to lead us in the pledge of allegiance if. Now, remember smart, if you give Stephanie just a bit to mute everybody. And then we will. Give you the go ahead. Okay, council member, go ahead, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilman. Okay. Counsel, the agendas before you this evening may have a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion in seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Presentations this evening, we have finance director Aaron Glenn is going to present the financial report for the fourth quarter of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty one. Aaron.
All right, thank you. Let me pull up my. Presentation here. Can't really see that.
Yeah, we've got it. Can you go full screen?
Yep.
Perfect.
All right, so thank you. Good evening, council. Um. This evening, I'm presenting the twenty twenty one fourth quarter financial report. Uh, we'll start an evening with an overview of the economic update followed by specific information regarding the general fund and then. The other funds. Um, this first overview of the economy item is a chart I started sharing about a year ago. On the left side is specific information to Benton County and on the right side is all of Washington. Uh, the majority of the displayed economic indicators are trending in a positive direction compared to this. Uh, so the same time period would be the December. Um, thirty first, twenty twenty, uh, compared to December thirty first, twenty twenty, um. Uh, periods. Uh, total employment is up as well as unemployment is down and the sales information is also increased. And support programs are down. Uh, a word of caution on these positive numbers, however. Um, inflation is higher than it has been in years and is in continuing. Uh, for example, when looking at the sales information on the previous slide, I'll just bring that up again. Um, you'll see that those numbers are increased. Uh. And I'm talking about these numbers in here. Um, those are significant increase. Um, but. Um, when the cost of the goods are going up. Um, it's also increasing those. So, for example, um. We'll do a hypothetical a year ago, if a person went out to purchase a new truck. It costs forty thousand. Uh, and now they would go out and purchase the exact same truck. It's forty eight thousand. So it was the same good, but they're paying more and therefore the sales, the sales revenue is higher. So it's just. A word of caution as our inflation is increasing. Um, we discussed the social security cola increase during our mid biennial review, which was five point nine percent. Um, the largest cola for social security in almost forty years. Uh, the CPI for the Seattle area was seven point six percent increase year over year. Uh, with food being at eight point four percent and energy up twenty five percent, which was mainly gasoline. So all just a word of caution to the positive numbers is with inflation, it kind of dampers some of that. Uh, locally, uh, we're looking at some of the building activity going on in West Richland. Um, single family permits issued were two hundred and fifty eight. Uh. Compared to two hundred and thirty one at the same time for twenty one and twenty twenty. Um, the permit valuation is also increased, so the cost of the homes is going up and which. Has a reflection on the permit fee revenue, which has also increased. Um. Let's see, uh, this is another view of the single family home permits. This shows, uh, the year in comparison. Uh, along with the green line, which is the valuation, increase in valuation. So that's single family permits, uh, every year, and then the green line is the. Evaluation going up as well.
Uh, Richard, Richard has his hand up, Aaron.
Go ahead.
We didn't change our methodology of calculating valuation, did we, Eric?
No, we did not.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead, Erin.
Um, okay, so this, uh, is another, uh, view. Um, of building current fees collected. And so what this one is doing is it's comparing what we, uh, have budgeted to, uh, the actual that we have collected. So this blue line, kind of this blue background is where, uh, we are as far as budget goes. And then this darker gray with the black line is where we've actually collected. And you'll see here, this is, um, where we did a correction when we were reviewing the, in the mid biennial budget review. Uh, we bought, brought this line up to be more projected, um, where we were. So we, we bumped it up. Um, and you can see that in the change of slope there. Um, now, uh, for general fund, uh, we'll look at some specific information. Uh, this slide shows where the money is coming from, and this is budgeted money. Uh, you can, uh, general fund revenue, the majority is taxes, which is, uh, sales tax, property tax and, uh, utility taxes. Let's see. Um, here's another view, uh, in general fund collected, um, the city collected three percent. Uh, more revenue in twenty one compared to twenty twenty. This graph shows a larger collection in the. Fourth quarter for twenty twenty compared to twenty twenty one, which is kind of an unusual, uh, event, but that was the. Cares funding, um, and a lot of that money went out to businesses. Uh, as a grant that were affected by COVID, but that revenue, uh, is kind of throws that fourth quarter off a little bit. Um. This is another view, the general fund revenues, uh, this is comparing budget. Uh, to what was collected. Um, so for year twenty twenty one, the general fund collected, uh, fifty three percent. Of what was budgeted, um, so we're looking for at least fifty percent in, uh, this category. So fifty three percent were on target. Uh, and doing well. Uh, let's see. Um, these next three slides are going to look at sales tax revenue in the general fund. Uh, sales tax increased twenty seven percent compared to the prior year. Um, and here we'll see the by business sector. Uh, so those are the first, uh, some of the, uh, key ones here is this retail one has been going up forty. Uh. Percent change was forty five percent. Uh, in reviewing some of the specific data where this was derived from some of these real, uh. Realtors or retailers, sorry, retailers are associated with the building, uh. Industries such as lumber suppliers, cabinet companies. So it looks like a lot of those specific. Supplies are coming through the retail sector rather than us seeing it in the construction sector, so tied closely. Um, also online, uh, retailers have been a big, uh, contributing factor. Um, this third slide is similar to the one we looked at with, um, the building permits, but this is sales tax. So again, this is showing that we're on target, oh. Uh, and potentially exceed our, uh, expected, uh, revenue. Another major revenue source in the general fund is from utility taxes. Uh, overall, the utility tax revenue increased three percent compared to twenty twenty. There was increases in electric, water, sewer, stormwater and solid waste. Uh, this increase, uh, mostly contributed to the increase in rates as well as large developments. Another look at the, um. Individual, uh, utility taxes and how they progressed through the years. Um, the one that we do continue to see monitor, I know, uh, we've reported on this for several years is the telephone utility tax, which continues. Uh, steep, uh, I think it's getting steeper downward trend. Um. Let's see. Um. Another major, uh, general fund revenue source is property tax, uh, which increased six percent compared to the prior year. And you can see that, uh, we collect most of those in the second and fourth quarter of the year. So where does our money go? Um, the majority of the expenses, this is budget, uh, is going to public safety with fifty two percent. Um, creative development makes up, uh, fifteen percent, public works, which includes parks and engineering services. Uh, makes up twelve percent, and then there's some, uh, smaller numbers with finance, city clerk, council. And some other, uh, transfers. Um, this, the city, let's see. Um, this is a, another look at, um, the department view. The total general fund expenditures were forty one percent of the biennial budget. Uh, for twenty one, so we're in the, that was the first of the two year budget, the first year. So we're looking at anything for fifty percent or less, uh, to make sure that we're on target for our spending, which, uh, forty one percent, we're doing well. Um. This slide is, uh, we're starting to get into our special revenue funds. Which is our street fund, park impact fund, criminal justice and library funds. This graph, uh, displays the major revenue sources for each fund. Uh, each of these funds has seen the major revenue source increase compared to twenty twenty. Um, the one to pay particular close attention to is in the fuel tax in the street fund. So this one right here. Um. As fuel prices and inflation increase, uh, drivers tend to drive less and use less fuel, which results in, uh, lower fuel tax revenue collected. Um, something opposite of what we see with sales tax. So sales tax is based on. The value of the good, fuel tax is calculated on the gallons sold. So. Uh, with the price increase in fuel, it does not affect, um. The amount that the city would collect in revenue. Uh, it, that way. Um, this picture of the special revenue expenditures, for the most part, these, uh, have remained fairly flat. Uh, the one exception is the library fund. Um, it's still relatively similar, but it does vary based on the contract we have with, uh, Mid Columbia Library. Um, next we have our capital project funds. So three oh one and fund three oh one and fund three oh two are, um. Kind of our permanent capital ones that, um. Deal with, uh, streets and then some other capital projects. Fun three fifteen is specific to our, uh, police facility. Um, fun three fifty five is, uh, also more of a permanent one with our transportation, uh, improvement programs. And then fun three sixty, we actually closed at the end of twenty twenty one, uh, it had no activity. Um, but here are. A, um, revenue sources for those funds. You can see, um. Fund three oh one and three oh two, that's the real estate excise tax, uh, is the funding source of those. And, um, with real estate going up, we have also, uh, sales, we have collected more. Not real estate excise tax. The police facility, we saw that bond come in. In twenty nineteen, so it's not seen on here. Um, and the transportation, um, fun three fifty five. In twenty twenty, we had several larger, uh, capital projects such as, I think it was the Richland School District were the two large ones that kind of inflated that number for twenty twenty. And then fun three sixty, there was no activity. Um, this is a real estate excise tax. You can see twenty twenty one, uh, was an exceptional year. Um, and with the price of real estate, we saw fifty eight percent. Increase, uh, compared to the prior year. Um, this one is the, for transportation impact fees, they did decrease, um, the. Twenty twenty, as I stated earlier, uh, we had some large, uh, school district facilities, although we did have the West Richland. Um, police station in the first quarter of this year. Uh, this is the expenditures going out of, uh, these capital projects. Um. And these, you can see fun three fifteen, uh, that's us building the police facility, uh, we're getting close to being done and you can see. Where that. Um. And these other ones, um. You don't have a lot of projects going on in them at the moment. I think three fifty five might have a small project in there, but. All of these are going to be based on, uh, what kind of capital projects we have going on. Um, as far as utility funds, um. With our water collections, uh, increased eight percent. Again, the large number of development coming in, we're adding. Um, services where it adds up December thirty first, we build out five thousand five hundred and twenty one water account. And then we see the same trend for all, most of our, um. Utility revenues, uh, sewer is very similar. Uh, as is irrigation, uh, it was four percent. Uh, stormwater, uh, was a six percent increase. Um, solid waste, a six percent increase. And then the expenditures. Um. The green one is the budget, the red line is where we've spent for twenty twenty one, and then the blue line is just comparing how we're spending compared to twenty twenty. Uh, we're right in line, um, again, doing a, a good job. So is there any questions?
All right, thank you, Erin. Good information, but optimistically cautious with today's inflation. Yes, for sure. Counsel, like questions? I see you got council member Bloom.
Yeah, I just wanted to reflect on something, um. We, on sales tax, we actually did better than the, uh, the PTBA for, uh. For the. Transit, which only had twenty two point three percent increase overall. So, uh, twenty seven percent was, you know, five percent higher than the rest of the area, thereabouts. So just throw that up there.
All right, thank you for the comment. Council member smart.
Uh, yeah, well, Richard, you almost stole my thunder there, but I just want to say basically the same thing, that it looks like sales tax. Uh, caught up to utility taxes, uh, pretty close. And exceeds property taxes. So I think that's a interesting milestone. Um, the other question I have, Erin, uh, back on the, um. Counsel budget, I think it, you had one percent of the city budget goes to council. Um, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Because. You're missing some pay or something.
No, I think. I think it's more like legislative, it should be more than council maybe because it'll be like election costs and I think is usually at one of the bigger ones. Um, and then, uh, obviously your pay. And again, uh, I'd have to go back and look, but it's probably some rounding in there. It's probably like point eight percent and it rounds it up to one.
Okay. Yeah, just curious. I don't, I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm not elegant for details right now, but, um. If it were really one percent, that would be quite a bit of money. Um. And maybe it needs to be renamed or something. As a category. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? All right. Thank you, Erin. Much appreciated. Look forward to see what brings the first quarter here. All right, council, we're going to go and move on to our consent agenda this evening. Which includes the approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty two. Uh, confirmed appointment to salary commission. Resolution seventeen twenty two authorizing the mayor to execute. Enter local agreement between the cities of Kenilwick, Richland, Pasco, West Richland. And the Benton County Franklin, Benton Franklin Health District for funding the operation of the regional algae bloom lab, laboratory screening services. Resolution eighteen twenty two authorizing adoption of a proclamation proclaiming April ninth as Black and Blue Day. Excuse me, back at the blue day. Uh, resolution nineteen twenty two authorizing adoption of the proclamation proclaiming May first. Through May seventh, twenty twenty two as Public Service Recognition Week. And resolution twenty twenty two, amending resolution nineteen oh six, locations for public postings. If there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak to our consent agenda this evening. If you'd please raise your hand or on by phone star nine. Clerk will recognize you. I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I don't see anyone, no.
Okay. Seeing no one, council may have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
A motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion carrying, thank you. Chief, my apologies, not never do want to make it a black and blue, uh, back the blue day, do we? Okay, moving on for the first opportunity for citizens' public comment, uh. If you'd like to address counsel for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Please raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone and Stephanie will mute you. I see no one here on my screen. Stephanie, how about you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Okay. Very good. We're going to go ahead, move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Items eight, A and B are a public hearing and resolution for the vacation of an irrigation easement. I'll ask our associate planner Alicia to present the staff report this evening. Alicia.
Good evening. Um, we have an irrigation easement petition, the, um, property owners, Michelle and Tom Heidi. And Jennifer and Tim Hubbard, they're the property owners at sixty seven forty two and sixty seven twenty eight Collins Road. Um, that's located in Sunset Heights, um, phase three lots nine and ten. Um, they're looking to vacate a ten foot irrigation easement along the rear property line on both properties, lots nine and ten. Um, the, um. Property owners dedicated new easements to replace the current existing easements. The reason why they're asking for this is because. Um, last year there were some, in the process of building retaining walls, there was some damage done to the. Um, irrigation lines back there and they asked to move those closer to their rear property line and dedicate new easements and. Um, with this vacation, that would allow them to. Move. Would allow them to move forward with relocating the lines to the new easements and continuing their retaining wall project. Um, the. Uh, staff routed out the application to franchise utilities. And gave everyone fifteen days to review. Um, we've received no objections to the proposal. A few questions about what they're planning to do. Um, if you'll look in your agenda packet at, um. Attachment five, those are the new recorded easements. They've already gone through the process of recording those and have provided the recorded copies to the city. Um. Are there? I believe that's everything from, oh, and we received approval from the public works department as well.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing up at six twenty eight. If you'd like to provide comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand or start nine by phone. Stephanie will recognize you. And, uh. Unmute you and please state your name and place of residence, city of residence for the record. I see we have. One gentleman, Mr. Beard. Stephanie, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my name is Philip Beard. I live at. Six, seven, three, three Caspian Place. And Alicia, that my, my question is. They will actually reconnect those lines that were damaged in the project. So that those irrigation lines, because it's adjacent property to my, uh, home, I just want to make sure that. If the irrigation system ever has to be used at some point in the future. That the lines are still will be, or will, will be eventually reconnected.
Yes, that's correct. They are responsible for repairing the damage to the lines and they, this is part of the process for them to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Stephanie, do you see anyone else?
I do not, no.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close, close the public hearing at six twenty nine. So we have resolution twenty one twenty two vacating a ten foot wide irrigation easement located on Sunset Heights Lots. Phase, lots, heights, phase three lots nine and ten, uh, council, do I have a motion?
I move to resolution twenty one twenty two authorizing the vacation of the ten foot irrigation easement for file V A C A oh oh two dash two oh two two.
Second.
Okay.
A motion and a second, uh, council, any more questions of Alicia or questions, conversation amongst yourselves? Council member smart.
Uh, yeah, Alicia, I just wanted to. Uh, yeah, Alicia, I just wanted to confirm, so I, I was, so I understand there that they wanna move the line back toward their back property line. Um, and that it was further away from the back property lines, by understanding, and it was damaged. And so I'm just wondering, like, so we're vacating some easement, but we're not establishing a new easement, right? Because the line could have originally been in that, or right up against the property line in the first place? Or did the original easement stop before the property line before?
So if you'll look at attachment, see, uh, attachment two, that it shows the, it's the wrong attachment, sorry, I'm pulling this up.
Well, so am I, so.
We'll get attachment two, at the original configuration of, yes, at the original configuration of the easements, they have like these little flags down to the actual easement, so it's placing it ten feet away from the property line, which is not typically how we do irrigation easements, if we were to have people dedicate them now.
The purpose of the John was the slope in the backyard, they had a significant slope on their backyard. They're creating, they're retaining all the shore, all of that up, which allows that to shift over the ten feet.
Okay, so that's why it wasn't there in the first place, was because of the topography. Cause it just seemed weird that the original easement wasn't right on the line. Um, okay, all right, that, that clears it up, thank you, and so they'll have to, and so I, I guess then sort of, this is separate from, you know, uh, uh, approving an easement relocation, but just out of curiosity, I mean, uh, you said they damaged some irrigation line that was already there, and I presume it was being used, and, and now this is gonna be replaced?
Dry irrigation.
It's a dry line.
Dry irrigation, okay, all right, good, just, just, uh, just trying to get the rest of the story there. That's, that answers my questions, thank you.
Okay, very, thank you, council. Council member blue?
Uh, yes, I was looking at those two, so currently, the, they're, they're just rerouting the dry irrigation system route over to, I assume it's gonna be a lot eleven next door, from the original one seemed to have come out of lot fifteen, sixteen, is that correct?
I don't know that they're necessarily rerouting, but they, uh, they will be reconnecting the lines once they've moved them.
So.
So exhibit, the exhibit map there that you're looking at on attachment two, Richard, that's showing the existing easement as established in the plat. For these two lots only, it doesn't show you what, where they go to outside of these two lots, but there are existing easements that run up to lot fifteen and sixteen and beyond to lot eleven, and over to lot eight and other lots within that subdivision. So this is just shifting that ten feet to the north effectively.
Right, and, and the retaining wall is being built between lots fifteen, sixteen, and nine and ten, is that correct?
Yes, they're building it toward, it will be out of the easement, but they'll be building it toward the rear of the property.
Right, but, but we're moving the, we're moving the irrigation easement closer to the rear.
Mm-hmm, and then the retaining wall, um, the retaining wall would be on the, towards the, I believe it would be the south, so towards the house rather than towards the property line. Does that make?
So, so the easement's gonna be on the other side of the retaining wall?
Yes.
Oh, so it's gonna be very deep.
Well, is it on the downhill side of the retaining wall or uphill side?
Downhill side, so if you'll look in, attachment five.
Okay, I understand, never mind.
Yeah, Collins is the high.
Topological map.
Perfect, all on the same page?
Yep.
Great, okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion carries unanimous, thank you, council, appreciate it. And moving on to items eight C and eight D are a public hearing and a resolution for the vacation of the utility easement. Our community development director, Eric Madden Hall, will present this staff report this evening, Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we call you this evening as a request to vacate a utility easement for lot one twenty-seven of the Willamette, Willamette Heights, section six subdivision. Included in the packet is the staff report, attachments, which include the draft resolution, exhibit map, vicinity map, legal description of the utility easement vacation, and a copy of a plat of the Willamette Heights illustrating the thirty-foot utility easements dedicated thereon, and a shortened version of ordinance ten twenty showing the city did not accept the thirty-three foot federal land patents for lot, for lot one twenty-seven. And I just wanna make sure that we understand that there's a difference between the utility easements that are dedicated on the plat versus the federal land patents that are separate, those are the thirty-three foot easements. The thirty-foot easements are the dedicated on the plat, so there shouldn't be, hope, hope there's no confusion there, they're, they're two separate things. Um, however, the federal land patents don't apply on this lot, because in ten twenty, we did not accept those uh, for this parcel. The easement sought to be vacated is the southerly twenty feet of the northerly thirty feet of the westerly twenty feet of the easterly thirty feet, and the northerly twenty feet of the southerly thirty feet, and the easterly twenty feet of the westerly thirty feet of lot one twenty-seven. In simple terms, they're requesting to reduce the thirty-foot easement down to ten feet along the perimeter, uh, shown in the exhibit map. The easements were recreated under the plat of Willamette Heights, section six, as stated. Uh, we published the notice for the easement of the vacation on our website and other, um, electronic sources. We also mailed neighboring property owners and posted the site and routed through the franchise utilities for comment. We received no written comments objecting to proposal and no questions from council or both prior to the meeting. Public Works has reviewed the request and finds that the city has no need for the full thirty-foot utility easements and recommends approving the reduced easements to the ten feet as proposed. Water and sewer services will be provided to the site, and the vacation will not prevent other properties in the vicinity from accessing utilities. Community Development Department has reviewed the proposal and recommends council approve the proposed utility vacation as proposed, thank you.
Thank you, Eric, appreciate it. I'll open the public hearing up at six thirty-eight. If anyone would like to provide comment to this item on the agenda, please raise your hand or star nine by phone, and you will be recognized by the clerk. Stephanie, do you see anybody?
I do not see anyone, no.
Very good. With that, I will go ahead then and close that public hearing at six thirty-nine. Uh, council, resolution twenty-two twenty-two vacating utilities went on a Lamont Heights, section six, lot one twenty-seven, do I have a motion, please?
I moved past resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two authorizing the vacation of a portion of the thirty-foot utility easement for file V A C A zero zero three dash two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further questions of Eric? Council member smart?
Yeah, hey, Eric, so I'm just wondering, I know, so this is just for utility easements, uh, and, and that doesn't affect the access easement, that's what I heard you say, right?
So the, the plat of section six dedicated a thirty-foot utility easement. The federal land patents established a thirty-three foot, um, access and utility easements. But in ten twenty, the resolution or ordinance ten twenty, those patents were not accepted for this lot, so those do not exist on this parcel. So we're just vacating the plat, the, the twenty foot around the perimeter, retaining the ten for the plat easements that were established.
And so where, where is the access for this lot?
Uh, they have frontage on bombing.
So if this lot were developed?
North, the northwest corner there, um,
I see that.
Has, has frontage on bombing range, so they'll have access there.
Okay, is that where we, so this is, we're only dealing with the utilities right now. And you're saying that we, did, did we accept, and you're saying we did not accept any additional access easements in ten twenty for this property?
If you look in the packet, in the attachment that I have provided,
Uh-huh.
Um, attachment number six on page seventy-four of your packet.
Right.
Um, you'll see ordinance ten twenty, I shortened it, I didn't include all of the, the different lots, I only included the ordinance itself and lot one twenty-seven, and you can see there that none were accepted.
Yeah, and by the way, I appreciate all these attachments, especially the maps, that's awesome. Compared to what we were getting a few years ago, this is great. Um, but now, so I guess I'm just, I think that just since this has come up here in front of council, I don't, I don't have a problem, uh, with the utility easements being vacated. As stated, um, I'm just a little surprised that, um, you know, focusing in on this lot, that, that we didn't, um, ask for there to be, uh, and another access besides bombing range itself. It just seems like, uh, it would made a lot of sense, especially looking at the Google Earth map that you provided, and seeing that there is a, like a utility access road uh, just to the north, um, that I think is, is that, I don't know if that's city property, I think that's that green, that green property that we've got, uh, with, um, maybe there's an underground swale or something there, I'm not sure what that is, but there's a, there's a side road or a driveway that comes off of bombing range there. Uh, and I don't know if it connects to other roads, but at any rate, my, my question was, is if there was gonna be another access instead of bombing range, which maybe there can't be now, um, would a utility vacation um, impact some other reasonable side street access that might, that might lead to this property? I, I just wanna bring it up as a, as a potentiality, um, in case somebody doesn't wanna drive, yeah, is that even a possibility?
Well, given this, the slope of this parcel, having any access would be unwise, just because of how it slopes up, this is where bombing range is climbing up the hill. Um, and so that there is a, a good slope to it, and we've already given up, when we, when you passed ordinance ten twenty, you already gave up that access for this parcel to retain anything there. So that, that ship has sailed.
Yeah, I was just looking at the, at the Google Earth there and looking to see if there was even a possibility of getting access from another location, regardless of the slope, and it looks like it would have to, it would have, it would impact already developed properties, it looks like around it, so. Okay.
That, that was considered by the developer, um, when they were doing it. Uh, but it was in the middle of the lawsuit that we were in the middle of. And so we just figured that access off bombing range would be the easiest direct route, and didn't wanna fight the battle.
Right.
Made out, made it out, so.
Roscoe's got his hand up for a little further explanation.
So, just to be clear, um, there was no offer dedication on the federal land patent, so there was nothing to accept. So what you have before you was the plat of section six, there was no, uh, access easement on that for this lot. There was only thirty-foot utility easements dedicated.
Wow.
So, in this area, if you look at the land patents, um, none of them had it. So their only access for lot one twenty-seven is to bomb and range, and they actually, there's an existing driveway that's already there that was put in when bombing range was constructed, so just, just to be clear, so what's, what's before you is just utility easement. And, uh, so, th- th- they've got sufficient access for this parcel, whether it's developed as is, or whether it's short plotted in the future. Coming out to bomb range, and there's not other options going in any of the other directions.
Thank you for the verification of that, Roscoe, uh, council member blue?
Well, Roscoe stole my thunder, I was gonna point that out. Five, you'll see that the last line, and, and I'll note, have much better copies of this are available on the B L M website, but that last two sentences are Xed out. That was original X-ing back when they issued the patent, so, um, it's like there, there are three different, there are three different patents out there, some, um, gave up ease, the thirty-three foot easement consistent with the, uh, plat. Some had thirty-three foot easements all the way around, and some had them Xed out, so, uh.
All right, we're, we're focusing on what, what we have in front of us this evening, but thank you for the historical record there, councilman blue. All right, very good, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, council, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose like sign. Motion carries unanimous, thanks, council, appreciate it, thank you for the clarification, both Eric and Roscoe. Moving on to unfinished business, we have none this evening, nor do we have any new business. So this is the time for our second opportunity for council, excuse me, for citizens to address council this evening. If you'd like to provide comments, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine on your phone. You will be recognized, make comment. Stephanie, do you see anyone this evening? I do not.
I do not see anyone, no.
Very good, we will go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements and reports, comments. Uh, staff, if you have anything to talk to the council this evening or address, we'll, so you got, uh, chief Majetic?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, ladies and general counsel and audience. Uh, a couple of things, uh, first, I, I notified the mayor and Selena, and I believe I've talked to a few of you um, that I have filed my retirement papers with the state, and my last day with the city will be May twentieth. Um, tomorrow, uh, well, a couple of things about our new facility, tomorrow, uh, we're having a citizens academy in person for the first time in three years, um, after the COVID, uh, pandemic. So, uh, we have eighteen people signed up for the class, we're very happy to welcome people back in the facility. Um, also with the facility and our, our community room, uh, we have a F T O academy starting, uh, which, uh, Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission is providing instructors to train out of our facility for twenty-five officers all throughout the state, uh, coming to West Richland for training. And that's just the beginning, um, we, uh, recently through staff and, uh, with the help of Bronson and, uh, Stephanie, who's working on the final product, and, uh, Aaron is helping us with the financial part, uh, we're gonna have the agreement and users' agreement, uh, procedures in place, uh, so our community members uh, can start reserving the community room as well for use. Uh, we're very excited, um, to start having people back, uh, in the building, and, uh, we really wanna make this a public, uh, building, and that's what we promised from the get-go, and we're right there. Um, it's starting now, and we're all really happy to see it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief, much appreciated. Roscoe? You can unmute Roscoe, please.
There you go, Roscoe. Boy, difficult, I think she's doing it on purpose. Um, uh, just to be clear, uh, utility committee will meet, uh, uh, on the nineteenth, Tuesday at five, could be via Zoom, uh, trying to get the chief and the city engineer and everybody's schedule, uh, hooked up, that's about the only time, so I was trying to do it in person, but we'll do it Zoom at five on the nineteenth before the next city council meeting, uh, it'll be a follow-up to the Collins Road engineering analysis, there was some follow-up that utility committee asked for after our last meeting, so I've got. Utility committee asked for after our last meeting, so I've got more information, we'll. Uh, have that discussion and hopefully bring something to council, uh, in May. Uh, second thing, uh, Paradise Way got paved. Last week, uh, it's still not open, uh. They're out there, uh, raising utility water and sewer man holes. So do not go around the rose close signs, or you will not be happy, there's some pretty big holes there. They'll raise the utilities, patch it, there'll be some striping this week, so we're getting close. Uh, so give us some time, we'll get that finished up in the next week or two, so it's getting close, and that'll be a nice. Connection taking paradise all the way from, uh, bombing range all the way out to Keen Road. And then lastly, uh, we're on the final stages of finalizing, uh, an agreement with Wash Dot. To transfer the SR two two four Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project. That's a twenty six million dollar project that's getting transferred from DOT to the city of West Richland, so. Uh, the engineering staff at West Richmond will be taking over the design of that project one hundred percent, so. Uh, look for that agreement at the next, uh, council meeting, we're very close on getting, uh, that put together. And I'll give you a little more, uh, explanation, uh, at the next council meeting of why that's occurring, so. It's all I had, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Roscoe. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, so I have a couple of things for you, one is an update, we had a open house. For the Lewis and Clark Ranch project, it was a scoping meeting. Uh, to hear from the community on May, March seventeenth, um, went very well, we had about sixty people from the community show up. Not including staff or our consultants, so it was a good turnout. Uh, thank you, chief, for letting us use the NOSKU, uh, community room, it was a great room to hold, host, uh, that group. And be able to. Uh, hear the, the voices and concerns of the community as far as what needed to be. Addressed in the scoping document for the EIS that will be developed for the overall project. So it's really good, good information, good, good feedback from the community, um, we're hoping to have the second week in. May, and I'll have an announcement in the utility bill going out to all of the residents for this, uh, but it'll be the. Uh, charrette meeting that we're gonna be holding for the Lewis and Clark Ranch. Uh, so hopefully be able to get people to come out and participate, be able to provide some input, uh, I'd love to get more city residents, we have a lot of county residents. Come out and talk about water and well issues at the, the scoping meeting, um, and so I hope to get some more residents to come out and participate and be good. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the great success, and I hope I don't still mayor's thunder too much, but there was a, uh, the event out, the Red Mountain Event Center with the. Apple Cup this weekend. Uh, was absolutely fantastic, we had about five thousand people attend over the weekend each day. Um, and hearing Hector Cruz from the, uh, Hispanic Chamber, I believe, or, or no, uh, so.
Visit Tri-City.
Visit Tri-City, yeah, he said that in October, the event brought in about. Uh, was it three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to our region in tourism dollars? And that was the, that was the, um. October event, so this event, I, I think there was a better turnout at this event, it was much better organized, uh, traffic. Was much cleaner, much easier to get to and through, uh, Van Geeson on the event days. Uh, they used the TLAC building and shuttling people in and out of there very well, uh, much better, much better, and, uh, clean, cleaner. Solutions, so we're really excited for what they did for our community, the event. Itself was fantastic, lot of energy, a lot of excitement around it. Uh, you go out there and read up on Facebook, and it's, it's all positive, it's all great information, and. And just love having that in our community, what it does for our community, what it brings to our community. Uh, I can definitely see some of the economic sprinkler that's providing already in our community, matter of fact, the, uh, Sun Market. C store out front of City Hall just opened last week, and they pushed hard to get it open before. The race, so that they could, uh, be able to provide, uh, needed goods and services to, to those that are gonna be out there at the raceway, so. Uh, glad that it's here, glad for that event and what it does for our community.
Uh, Eric pretty much covered it all, the, uh, yeah, it was a, a great event, the only thing everybody missed, if you weren't there at the event, there's representative Clifford joined us and actually, uh. Kissed the start finish line, so you can go look for that enthusiastic photo, uh, on Facebook, but, uh. Yeah, it was a very well organized, flowed very well, uh. Thousands of dollars of economic sprinklers throughout our region. Uh, it was a, a, a great race, and we're looking forward to multiple things, you can follow, uh, Red Mountain Event Center for their, uh. Uh, monster trucks, fireworks shows, fourth of July. Uh, hogs and dogs, cool desert nights, uh, they'll be leasing the facility to other events that will occur as well. Uh, so obviously, they, they, they've proven to, uh, the city staff. Uh, which might have had a few doubters around that this is something that could work, and I believe it's pleasantly pleased the city council as well, and. I, I, uh, I had an opportunity to just speak briefly, uh, thanking, uh, staff and council and. And the, uh, the, the belief that Red Mountain Event Center had in. Putting in millions, or excuse me, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of. Uh, investment into the city's property to make it a, a viable, uh, economic driver for our region here, so. Uh, looking forward to, but, and fun things, more fun things to come, and, uh, a great event there. Uh, now, Chief Majetic did make his adjournment, but, uh, publicly to, uh. To council, uh, this evening, I see we have Eric from the Tri-City Herald. Uh, so I'm sure that we'll read about the, the, the chief's successes and his retirement announcement. Uh, the party's not over, the party's just beginning to, uh. Command the chief for his years of service, and not only Pasco and the city of West Richland. Uh, but what he's done for, uh, for public safety region-wide. Uh, great man, he promised me five years, he's given me more than that. Uh, the, the last hurrah was to, uh, create one of the, the, the most state-of-the-art. Uh, beautiful police facility, uh, by the voter-approved bond of twelve and a half million dollars. Uh, and he has disappointed, uh, he's, he's delivered everything through the, uh, the bond. With the support of, of our talented staff here in the city of West Richland. Uh, delivered everything that, uh, that he, that the bond promised, uh, so we're, we're very proud to, uh. Have an individual as Chief Majetic in our presence to, uh, leave us the legacy that he's left with the police station, the safety of our community at high ratings in the state of Washington for. Being the safest city. I mean, I could go on and on and on, but I'll save that for when we cut some cake, have some ice cream and a taco. So, chief, thank you very much for your years of service and dedication to public safety, Pasco, and the city of West Richland. With that, I'll, uh, turn it over to council, comments, Councilman Bloom.
Uh, yes, uh, two things, one is, uh, I heard the downside of, of. From an old timer of. New racetrack operation to the old days, and, uh, they missed some of the parking which we sold away. Uh, as far as that, uh, the, towards the back part of the lots. But, uh, also, uh, it appears that they had contracted out the shuttle service, um. Which probably means that, uh, transit could not provide that. Uh, we don't compete with, uh, with, uh. Retail, uh, services, but, um, once, uh, just a heads up for the future, once the, uh. Queensgate, uh, Transit Center is in. Um, the one seventy bus from Prosser through Benton City will go to Queensgate, that's the plan. And so that will roll right past the racetrack. And so, uh, I see in the future. Maybe next year, uh, there'll be bus service to the racetrack.
Yeah, that'd be great, we'd love to have it, uh, they, they would love to have it, and the only reason that, that it, it hasn't happened yet is. Because of the mask mandate for the federal transportation. Uh, otherwise, the conversations have been had, and looking forward to, uh, uh, that in the future, so. I'll, uh, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep you in the loop, Richard.
Okay.
All right, thank you, councilmember Moran.
Thank you, I, first, I also would like to congratulate Chief Majetic, thank you so much, it has been a pleasure, not only just as a council member, but also. For the Community Care Foundation working with you on that, so thank you so much for your time, and I hope that in your retirement. You are able to enjoy as much relaxation as you would like to have. For other items, there was a Benton Franklin Council Government Meeting that we had on the eighteenth. Uh, the first thing that we talked about is we actually had a representative from the governor's office talk to us about. The studies that they're continuing to do on the Lower Snake River dams, and there is a website out there if anybody would like to view it, and that is. L S R D, which stands for Lower Snake River Dams Options with an S dot org. And they are continuing to do outreach and engage the tribes and other stakeholders in this. And in mid-May of this year, they're going to have a draft report released for public comment, so people wanna take a look at that, of interest. Though, something that I didn't know, that the dams actually can affect for the entire nation, if not the world, is that. The price of potatoes and how much it costs to ship them along the dams. Pretty much sets the rate of how much potatoes cost in the rest of the United States, if not the world, from what they were saying, so that is. One of the many things that I think should be in discussion when we talk about the Lower Snake River Dams. Uh, we also talked about how Senator Murray's office is again opening up the congressionally designated spending. Application process, which used to be known as the, um. Uh. It's not dog ear, but earmark, there we go, uh, the earmark process. Uh, applications were due today, so hopefully we had something and we were able to submit that. Uh, let's see, we talked about loan programs a little bit. And then we had. Uh, we just discussed the future of meetings, there's a possibility that we'll be going to hybrid for the Benton Franklin Council of Governments. I'm, I'm curious about our own hybrid meetings, hopefully we'll be able to have those soon, I know that we were waiting on something in order to. Uh, go to hybrid meetings, I'm sure that there are those that would like to meet in person again, but still allow for those to attend virtually. Um. And then on the twenty, oh. Was somebody going to answer? Sorry, I was switching screens, oh, I'll continue on, on March twenty second, there was the Port of Kennewick meeting. And if you didn't get a chance to watch it, I would, because first Tridec gave a really good presentation about the partnership that they have with the port. Hopefully you will be able to work with them as well in the future on certain aspects, and also they gave, uh. There was a professor and a doctor from Eastern Washington University that gave a really good presentation about the COVID economic analysis. Uh, so if you didn't get a chance to catch that, you can go to their website to view that, other than that, it was. Again, a lot of discussion about all of the projects going on at the port, and. Hopefully they'll be able to have some more projects coming on to the West Richland side of things soon. Fingers crossed. Other than that, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing no one, uh, Councilman Bloom, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I just wanna jump in and piggyback on what Kate said, I attended the, uh, town hall that, uh. Uh, Congressman Newhouse had in Richland earlier this month on the dams. Um, being on the Yakima Basin Fish Wildlife Recovery Board. Um. The whole issue of dam removal, dam keep, um. It is a roll of the dice, it's, there is no science here. It's possible that, uh. That the dam removal would improve the fish, but, um. There is one thing that will improve the fish runs, it's shooting seals at the mouth. And so, uh. Seals are more of a problem than anything else, um, but it would, you know, there, there is some. Some benefit for removing the dams, but not clear that it would be, uh. Uh, benefit for the, potential benefit for the fish, but that's not clear. Because of predation that the fish will see. So I just wanted to, to come back and say, nah, um, there's no science here. There's just speculation.
Uh, one, one thing I will mention before I recognize Councilmember Hayes is, as I had the, uh. A meeting with the Health District today and stakeholders, I did. Uh, questioned Salvador, uh, from the governor's office. Uh, if there was any buzz of when the emergency governor's. Emergency order, uh, may be lifted. Uh, he made some comment in regards to, uh. Taking care of the business of the state with all of the funds that they could be collecting from the federal government with the mandate being in order. Uh, I kinda ask, I, well, I did, but asking if they had a direct deposit split for the city of West Richmond, because. You know, I think we're seeing everything from the federal side now, not much from the state, when we've asked him for our assistance, we haven't got a whole bunch in regards to that. Uh, anymore, it's all done, so, uh, I also asked them to, they wanted to stretch our meetings out to once a month, and I said, that's fine, but if, uh. Salvador was to have any updates as to what the governor's intentions are with the, uh. The man, the emergency mandate, uh, I wanted to know about it. Uh, piping in of support of what I had commented about was the other three mayors of the cities. Uh, so, I, I stirred the pot, uh, and I made it very clear that. Uh, we're ready to go back to, uh, go back to business as usual. Uh, so, you know, hopefully that'll happen sooner than later, but soon as we get our equipment, uh, that's. On the back, we're floating in the boat, uh, we'll get it put in and go in the back to hybrid, so, or to hybrid, so. There's your, there's your intel, we'll see what, uh, governor's office has to say about my comments, which. Don't, don't think I'll be getting a Christmas card this year either, so. Uh, Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, just a, a couple of events and stuff that's coming up in our community, one is a big one tomorrow, is the chamber luncheon. And our guest speaker is the mayor and Eric, and, uh, we have a lot of excitement about that, um, Eric will be talking about the economic. Um, development. And West Richmond, all the upgrades and everything, so we're excited to have you too, so. Um, look forward to that, all of you other, um, council people naturally are invited, so. Um, we're looking for a big turnout tomorrow for that, um, then, on, um, April twenty third, the city is putting on Earth Day again, bringing it back, so. That will be wonderful, so many people are so appreciative, um, for that, and then we do have Speed Fest coming up in June twenty third to the twenty fifth. Out at the Raceway, which. The response from different businesses that are looking into sponsors or being a vendor are ecstatic. About it being at the Raceway, so like Eric, Eric had said, there's so much. Um, economic development through, gonna be, um, through the Raceway and what they're doing, and just a huge shout out to. Um, Lacey and, and Eric and those guys from, um, Tri-City Raceway and Red Mountain Event Center. Um, they've been great to work with through the chamber, and it's just amazing to see how the Apple Cup turned out, and so I'm so proud of them. So that's all I have, thanks.
Hey, thank you. All right, no one else this evening? Okay, with that, we're gonna go ahead and, uh. Adjourn into an executive session. For RCW forty-two thirty-one ten to discuss le- with legal counsel, uh, represent the city in legal litigation issue. Uh, I, I see probably about fifteen minutes with no action to follow on this, so. Thank you, everyone, for joining this evening, and, uh, have a safe evening, Stephanie, if you'll go ahead and escort everybody to the front door. We'll, uh, welcome our guest speaker this evening.